Call meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Here.
Councilmember Burkett.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger. Councilmember Omera.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember Stanger.
Here.
Councilmember Quinn. Madam Chair, we have a form.
Thank you.
I move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of December 17, 2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Journal is approved. Bit openings, we have no bit openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, there are no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so I'll move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that same motion is through item number four, and that will be the order.
Item number five, Sixth District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number six.
The same motion, and that will go through item number eight, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Item number one, First District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
And our county executive is not here this evening, and we have no reports of special committees, so we will move to the public forum. Do you have those, Jen? Okay, how many do we have?
Eleven.
Okay. There's eleven speakers. We ask that you keep your comments two, three minutes, and Jen Frank will call your names.
First speaker is Nick Kassoff, and then followed by Karen Carabel.
(inaudible)
It's Christmas time, we're pretty nice at Christmas time.
Like most people, I view this council as a serious legislative body, so I have to ask you, what has gone wrong with the process on this complete streets bill? This council is pushing through a bill which was obviously authored by TrailNet. You're pushing a policy change which is opposed by eighty percent of your constituents, and you're doing so in a complete absence of important facts. There's a lot of questions an inquisitive legislator might want to ask about this bill. For example, last week Scott Ogilvy claimed that complete streets cost the city nothing. But just the performance measures section of this bill would easily cost the county fifty thousand dollars a year. And the exceptions procedures of the bill will run up huge costs, as it would require obtaining an exception even for activities like mowing and sweeping. Somebody on this council might have asked Mr. Ogilvy how such a bill could cost nothing, but you were silent. In fact, the only time a member has spoken in the weeks that I've been here has been to question Martin Pyon about his support for bike lanes on a project in 2004. And as it turns out, Mr. Pyon found his correspondence for that time, and he didn't support bike lanes at all. This bill imposes a complex regulatory scheme on our highway department. It will have costs, and it will shift the allocation of department resources. Yet, this council has not so much as spoken with the Director of Highways and Traffic. Nobody has questioned the Highway Department about the cost estimates that were in the newspaper a month ago. Nobody has asked the Highway Department what impact this bill would have on their ability to maintain and improve our roads. I urge the council to refer this bill to committee and to take public testimony from the Director of Highways and Traffic. Anything less is a dereliction of duty by the council. A few days ago, I engaged in a debate about this bill with somebody on STLtoday.com. The guy used a lot of lingo that most people aren't familiar with, and that made me suspicious, so I Googled him. Turns out, he's the press manager for Smart Growth America in Washington DC, a lobbying organization that receives more than six hundred thousand dollars a year in government funding. These are the sort of special interests that are feeding propaganda to this council. You should ignore their fake facts, ignore their AstroTurf lobbying, and start listening to real constituents and the professionals in our highway department.
Thank you.
Karen Carabel, followed by Kathy Poor.
So, I'm Karen Carabel. I teach safe traffic cycling, and I am opposed to the complete streets bill before you. The complete streets phenomenon reminds me of being back in high school. Remember how in high school the cool kids dictated fashion and fads for the rest of us? And the rest of us at least considered what the cool kids advocated, because we all want to be cool, right? Cool is the main tool used to promote complete streets. Don't get left behind. If you don't have complete streets, you won't be cool. The millennials won't choose you. I'm the mother of three millennials, two of whom still don't have driver's licenses. I've asked them and their friends, why did you choose to live where you're living? I have to tell you, not a one of them said, "This city has great bike lanes." But, you know, who can be against the idea of complete streets? The term sounds like mom and apple pie. Everyone should be able to use our public right-of-way in freedom and safety. And I'm not kidding, every single person should be able to. I mean, who doesn't want this? The problem is that the cool kids are remaking our roads in a way that makes life harder for everyone. If their roadway redesigns were merely sophomoric, that might be okay. But they are dangerous. You can look east to the city for Exhibit A. Manchester Road between Kings Highway and McCausland. Before this section of Manchester was turned into a complete street, it was one of the city's best roads for bicycling. I used it all the time. Now that the cool kids have had their way with Manchester Road, people are getting hurt. Here's what my friend Susan posted on Facebook last week. Just had a collision with a car this morning on Manchester. Was riding in the new bike lane, and someone cut right in front of me to get to the gas station at Kings Highway, and I couldn't stop. Took out her side-view mirror with my arm. Ouch! I'm fine, will be bruised tomorrow, and bike is fine. Rode in the rest of the way to work, but I sure miss having two regular travel lanes in both ways on Manchester. I had two and a half years of safe riding without the bike lane. So, be careful cyclists. Bike lanes are really a much more dangerous place to be than in with the flow of traffic. Complete streets as envisioned by the cool kids is a fad. It will come to pass, as all fads do. Meanwhile, those of us who have graduated from high school will keep promoting and teaching the ideals of real transportation freedom. People will choose bicycling when they feel expected and respected as a normal part of traffic. I urge the council to recognize this and not be sucked in by peer pressure, fashion, or fad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kathy Poor, followed by Jennifer Chan.
Hello, I am Kathy Poor. I live in Clayton Gardens, and I don't think I'm too cool. The kids I take, I run a group of eleven-year-olds to school on their bikes. Sometimes we walk. And I can see so many things that could be changed that would make it better and safer for us and for these kids. We have a bus from Clayton Gardens, but if I walk past it with my kid, we can get there to school before the bus gets there. But still, kids are going on the bus. I think their parents are worried about them, because a lot of the sidewalks, like along Handley, are very small, and they don't have bike lanes. I do not feel safe taking kids in the main traffic lanes, particularly on Brentwood Boulevard, Handley Road. So, I think, I think this is really important. I'm really shocked, actually, to hear another parent who is against this, because kids like zero to seventeen, I would say at least, should probably not be in the traffic, maybe not even in cars too much, but definitely not on bikes. The ones I do are little boys, and they are, you know, fast, and the energy, it's good for them. It's really good for everybody to be out there, but they're very reluctant, and the parents are very reluctant to do it, when, when the streets are dangerous, you know, it's just all about cars. And so, you know, there are a lot of little things they could do, like make the time longer when you cross the street for older people and for the high school kids. We need that. A lot of little things, doesn't have to be huge things. But I don't think it's the cool kids, I just think it's the kids. And, and I'm not representing anybody, you know, just the parents. And I guess, I can't, don't have any other questions? I'm so glad you're looking at this. Thank you so much for considering this issue, taking it seriously. There are a lot of other parents who would be here if they weren't on vacation, or, you know, in another place with family. But, you know, I'm just a local person, and heard about this, and I'm very happy that you're considering it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jennifer Chan, followed by Ann Jesse.
My name is Jennifer Chan. I live in Davis Place. I just moved here recently this summer with my three children. Thank you for your attention in this matter, because I think from New York, we have bike lanes, and we, our mayor Bloomberg did a fabulous job in creating, you know, more bike lanes for a healthier, you know, New York. I guess we want to do a healthier St. Louis. Anyway, I have three children, and they range from middle school, high school, middle school, and elementary. And my youngest loves to ride, and he's the one that I'm just very nervous about, you know, on the streets. And I ride with him, but, you know, how am I going to stop him from going too fast, too slow? And we've already encountered certain things already, but, you know, we still have to take a chance in life. So I'm here from New York, and I see that St. Louis is taking another approach at it, just like New York, I'm sure. And this matter helps the kids, and we can walk to school more, and we can walk to school or bike it, whatever we do. It's healthier. And happy holidays. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ann Jesse, followed by Stephen Baker.
I'd like to wish the council Merry Christmas. My name is Ann Jesse, and I live in Sunset Hills. And I've lived in St. Louis County my entire life. There's been some speculation about what will happen when complete streets is implemented. With its forty-plus years of related history, the Netherlands is a good model that we can study. And here's their story. After World War II, automobile ownership in the Netherlands skyrocketed. Traffic quickly became snarled. City centers were given over to parking lots, and buildings were torn down to make way for wider roads. Traffic fatalities increased sharply, many of them children, many of them on bicycles. Mass public protests against the slaughter erupted around the country, demanding improved safety for children, bicyclists, and pedestrians. During the oil crisis of 1973 and resulting economic crisis, the government responded with energy-saving policies and car-free Sundays, which reminded the citizens of how their towns used to look before parking lots and congestion. Some city centers were made car-free permanently. The wide boulevards were narrowed to make way for cycle and walking paths. Cycling increased in a spectacular way by 1978. Child traffic deaths went from four hundred in 1971 to fourteen in 2010. The Dutch now enjoy a fitter population, cleaner air, less dependence on foreign oil, much lower traffic deaths, and the highest bicycle use in the world. All brought about because of the will to change on the part of national and municipal decision-makers and planners by turning away from car-centric policies. Thankfully, our catalyst for change isn't child traffic deaths, but we most certainly will benefit from cleaner air, less dependence on foreign oil, healthier and fitter citizens, and less congestion if we follow the Netherlands' example. I want to thank the council for their consideration of the complete streets bill.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Stephen Baker, followed by Martin Pyon.
I'm a parent of a middle schooler, and I bike with her on some of the busiest streets in St. Louis, Clarkson Road and Manchester Road. I have seen what's happened to Clarkson Road when MoDOT came in and made the lane smaller. They have made it so that it's much harder for a bicyclist not to be in conflict with traffic. On Manchester Road, it hasn't happened yet. And I feel safe riding on Manchester Road where I don't feel safe riding on Clarkson Road. I think that implementing complete streets, where we're going to be adding in additional laneage for bikes, is going to end up causing more conflicts. It's going to be causing more accidents. I think this is a bad idea. I would like you not to pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Martin Pyon, followed by Lisa Pennet.
Madam Chairman and Councilmembers, I know and like former Clayton Mayor Linda Goldstein, after reading her recent letter, and then Alderman Scott Ogilvy's op-ed, both supporting complete streets, I had an epiphany. After all, who can be against a complete street? Does anyone support incomplete streets? They're the ones you drive along and suddenly come to a screeching hole to the precipice. And just beyond it is a big pile of cars, and maybe some pedestrians under the odd bike. And you have to back up against that line of cars that have stopped behind you. What a nightmare. So that's what complete streets sets out to correct, as listed in the first section of the bill. 1105 dot two five oh, complete streets policy. The county shall develop a safe, reliable, efficient, integrated, accessible, and connected multimodal transportation system that shall equally promote access, mobility, and health for all users, and shall ensure that the safety, convenience, and comfort of all users of the transportation system are genuinely accommodated, including pedestrians, bicyclists, users of mass transit, people of all ages and abilities, motorists, emergency responders, freight providers, and adjacent land users. Thank you. Let's start by examining how incomplete the present street is for each mode. Pedestrians. Currently, pedestrians aren't accommodated at all. We don't have a single sidewalk for them to walk on. And there's not a pedestrian button or countdown timer in sight. That has to change. Bicyclists. If there's no bike lane, how's a cyclist to get anywhere? We must have bike lanes on every single road, starting right outside your front door. Users of mass transit. I must admit, I don't often see buses heading down Florissant Road where I live. However, they do seem to manage somehow with what currently exists, and I've used MetroLink to hitch a ride on numerous occasions when I bike downtown from my home. I can't understand how that's been possible without a complete streets bill. People of all ages and abilities. I guess the streets need to be modified to handle three-year-olds on big wheels, but I forgot, bike lanes will do that. Paracrot, which represents handicapped people, supports this bill, and I support them. Imagine being in a wheelchair and trying to cross the street when there's a curb there. I wish there was a solution. Motorists, as I noted above, our present incomplete streets are a disaster waiting to happen for every motorist. Get cracking, Alborichi. Emergency responders, they're the ones responding to all those victims of incomplete streets. Freight providers. I forgot to mention the tangled wreckage of semis. When you've gone over the edge on your bike, the last thing you want landing on your bike helmet, which I brought with me, is one of those big rigs. The person who adopted the term complete streets was a genius. According to Wikipedia, that was Barbara McCann, who later, surprise, became the executive director of the National Complete Streets Coalition in 2003. It replaced the ineffective term routine accommodation. Who wants that when you can have a complete street? Thank you. I appreciate letting me wear this, by the way. Thank you.
Next speaker. Is the camera permanently attached?
Well, I've modified it to...
Okay. And when you're biking...
When I'm biking, I'm using this for taping. I used this on Manchester Road before and after they changed it.
Okay.
So, it's been useful.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa Pennet, followed by Alan Lederbrand.
I'm opposed to complete streets, but I continually come before this council and tell you all the reasons with the bills, with the page numbers, and it doesn't seem to do much good most of the time. So, having said that, I want to go into something else that's near and dear to my heart, which is the church coalition that I have in St. Louis County. And you guys kind of went back on the permits for the non-profit status for the schools, but not for the churches, which is very confusing to me, why it seems that St. Louis County and this council seems to be persecuting the church. I just, I don't understand it. And especially now, we're at Christmas time. And so, I would urge each one of you, because of the things that have happened with the nuns, with the monastery nuns, going against the nuns, going against the permits, going against the wishes of the church, to remember what God has called each one of you to be. Because I would say that you're not living out what God has called each one of you to be. And you smirk. And Steve, do you know what your name means? You are actually the first martyrs for Christians. And I find it so ironic that you seem to always be throwing stones at the Christians, because you're called to be something different than that. And each one of you, you have purpose and meaning beyond all this. Hazel, your name means the eyes of God. And so, I would say, beyond just being the eyes, to also be the mouthpiece to Him on here. Pat, that name changed all of Ireland. I don't know if you know that. You're pure. That's who you are. And Michael, you're supposed to be the greatest one to come. That's who you're supposed to be. And I would say that you, each one of you knows in your conscience, whether you say to us here, you know that you are called for something greater than what you're doing here. You're called for more than money and power and other people's agenda. And I just ask that you would each take this time, especially at this time, to see what God has really called each and every one of you to be, because He's placed you all here, and you guys should begin to live out what He's called you to be, because it's not this. It's not the emptiness of this and other people's agenda. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Lisa.
Next speaker is Alan Lederbrand, followed by Jennifer Berg.
Hi, my name is Alan Lederbrand. I live in LeMay, and I thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to oppose streetscape. I've heard a lot of the people who are for it, but I don't see why we have to emulate Europe. They've talked about the Katy Trail. Well, the Katy Trail was the redoing of railroad tracks. Why are, you know, railroad tracks are different than the city streets? And if you've seen, and then it referred to, I've heard people talk about the city. They've already instituted, started instituting streetscape. Well, I live, if you go up Mark and Ford, all of a sudden you've got four lanes of traffic, and all of a sudden you have to narrow down to two lanes, which causes congestion and we're, you know, and people backing up, the same way on other streets now in the county, which have already been up on Olive. You've got a lane set aside for bicycles, but also a lane for cars to pass, that can pass on the right side of the bicycle. So now you're moving bicyclers that used to follow along the shoulder of the road, you're moving them out in the middle of traffic. Is that really safer when you move the bicyclers out into the middle of traffic? I don't think so. It makes it more of a risk, especially if you want little kids riding their bikes out there in the middle of the street instead of at least along the edge where they're safer. I just oppose that. I mean, I don't understand, and plus the cost. You can't institute streetscape without costing money, and that money should go for the repair of the streets and fixing potholes, and especially in the wintertime, use that money to help salt the streets and make them safer. So in the wintertime, people are not, you know, walking on the street and falling and breaking their ankle, or having, you know, cars having accidents. So I think it would be a better use of the county's money in that situation. Plus, how many people are actually going to be riding their bikes in this nasty weather, or when it's pouring down rain? If we were in Florida where, you know, it didn't rain a whole lot, or it was nicer weather, but in, you know, half the time, nobody's going to be riding their bikes, very few. So I just think it's a really poor allocation of county funds towards streetscape when it could be used much better in other situations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jennifer Berg, followed by Marielle Brown.
Thank you for taking my comments. I'd like to say I appreciate your time. I'd also like to say I don't appreciate the time that you have, the meetings. I think it's extremely frustrating, and I have to wonder if it's by design. You have a meeting at three o'clock, and most people are working until five or 5:30. It's difficult enough to get here at six, actually before six, so that a person could sign in to have permission to speak to you. So I find that extremely frustrating, and it certainly seems a deliberate attempt to keep people from expressing their views, or enough of us from expressing our views. There's enough of that. I'm very frustrated that this keeps coming up. We're talking about complete streets, which, like Mr. Pyon stated, it's a very catchy name, and who would want incomplete streets? But I don't want to be fooled, and I don't want you to be fooled or easily bought by the semantics with those words. We're talking about point two percent of the population as being commuters by bicycle. And we're going to spend almost two billion dollars, with a B, to implement complete streets. Didn't St. Louis County just get downgraded in its credit rating? Is this really prudent use of our tax dollars? I submit no. It's not prudent use of our tax dollars. It's an extravagant waste at this point in time. There are needs everywhere. Bike paths are not needs, and let's talk about that. You've heard numerous people talk about the dangers that would come. Unless you're going to put entire barriers around where you're planning these bike paths that are car-proof, seems like you're putting bikers, giving them a false sense of security and putting them in more danger. So I think that's a really bad idea. Post-Dispatch, once again, they had an article November 26, and they had an editorial December 13. And the crux was, park this idea. I would urge you to, well, Mr. Dolan, Mr. Stanger, and Mrs. Erby, your names are on the complete streets as sponsors. I would urge you to reconsider and pull your support. Actually, I want you to vote no, and just put it all to rest. But it doesn't look like that's going to be happening. So, complete streets will reduce the flow of traffic. They will create more congestion. I'm curious if anyone on this council has communicated with the Teamsters. I have several friends in Teamsters, and one of our group members actually spoke this morning. I was hoping he was going to be able to get here in time to sign in. Obviously, that didn't happen. But it's our understanding that Teamsters are very upset with this, because these roundabouts, these roundabouts prevent flow of traffic and cause problems for people who are trying to deliver goods to area retail shopping centers. So I think that's a big problem, and if you haven't communicated with the Teamsters, I would suggest that you do so. Just vote no on this and put it to rest. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Final speaker is Marielle Brown.
Hello, I'm Marielle Brown, Bicycle and Pedestrian Planning Manager of TrailNet, and a LEAK-certified bicycle safety instructor as well. TrailNet has been working on bicycle and pedestrian master plans throughout the region for over, for about ten years. We've completed nineteen bicycle and pedestrian master plans. Currently, I'm working on two in the county, and I will be working on two more soon. We've worked with communities as diverse as Vanita Park to Brentwood, Clayton, Maplewood, and Richmond Heights. The planning process is grounded in public engagement, and the communities I've worked with, the people commonly want sidewalks, they want crosswalks, and bike lanes to create safer streets for themselves and their children. Parents tell me about how they want to... Parents tell me about how they want to bicycle with their children to school, but they can't find a route that is safe. Business owners tell me they want sidewalks that will invite their customers to stroll along the streets and visit all of the shops. Residents of all ages tell me they want a safe place to wait for the bus. During the planning process, Trailnet works closely with the city's engineers to determine how any proposed changes will affect traffic and safety on the road. We also work with engineers from MoDOT in St. Louis County to look at the roads that these agencies operate within the community we are working in. In many communities, the residents that are most concerned about safety and access on the busiest roads, the roads that are more likely to be operated by the county or by MoDOT. And their concerns are well-founded. If you look at a map of the fatal and serious injury crashes for all modes in our region for people biking, walking, and driving, you'll see the blue and red dots essentially outline our freeways and major arterials. Not only is it harder for drivers to see and register everything on the road at higher speeds, it is more dangerous if they do make a mistake and hit someone. The chances of a pedestrian dying when they are hit by a car going 20 miles per hour is 5%. The chances of a pedestrian dying when they are hit by a car going 40 miles per hour is 85%. Well-designed roads can reduce risk and save lives for people walking, biking, and driving. MoDOT reported in their most recent long-range plan that 7.8% of all fatalities in the state in 2012 of all, sorry, all road fatalities, not all fatalities, period, in the state in 2012 were people walking. This is a crucial issue and is something that we can address through great design. Residents want to walk to the businesses, transit stops, parks, libraries, schools, and community centers along these major roads. Making these roads accessible for people walking and biking is not just a question of sidewalks. It also concerns intersection design, turning radie, and signal timing. These design decisions should integrate the community's desires with national guidelines such as those published by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials and the National Association of City Transportation Officials. These national standards guide what kind of infrastructure is appropriate for a street given the volume and speed of traffic and width of existing pavement. These guidelines are based on rigorous observation and testing of infrastructure and real-world applications. The complete streets policy will allow St. Louis County engineers to work with residents and municipalities throughout the county to ensure that transportation projects reflect the community's desires and meet the national standards within existing right-of-way and within existing budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the final speaker.
That's okay. That will con, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you... That will conclude the public forum. We will move to introduction of bills. I don't want to disturb you two.
No, I wanted to make a comment.
Okay, that's...
The complete streets is, I'm totally confused now. I, you know, I keep hearing both sides, and I don't know where I am with it right now. And I was just asking if we could have a committee of the whole, just to, you know, and hear from Cheryl Hodges.
There's some other groups getting together to meet to talk about it before we do that. There's still groups that are interested in this ordinance, and we've been talking with them. We're setting up meetings in the future to meet with them, so that's why this has been held, taking everything into account, because the numbers out there are totally false. I mean, the millions and billions of dollars, that's never been the intent, and everybody knows that. So we're trying to work with some people, and when we get some more information, we'll get back with the highway department and everybody involved and try to put this complete streets bill in a proper frame where everybody understands what's going on. So there are still a couple of meetings that were, because of holidays, were put off with different groups that are interested.
Anne, I am assuming you will be chair next year. You can set up whatever you'd like to set up.
I'd just like to get some understanding, because right now I am...
And I think that, no, I think that's more than reasonable.
We intend to do that when, it was just things were, because of all the things going on, things were kind of put on hold. Because that, you know, obviously, the numbers aren't correct that are being thrown out here, so we need to...
We can do it. Okay, thank you, Karen.
Introduction of bills.
Bill number 324, introduced by Councilmember Burkett, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept grants and program income totaling $8,350,000 to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, appropriating the same for support of the Community Development Black Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnership Program, and the Federal Emergency Shelter Grant Program. Authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents in support of said programs. Authorizing the Director of Planning to execute supplemental cooperation agreements, subrecipient agreements, homebuyer agreements, homebuyer regulatory agreements, and home improvement contracts for the rehabilitation of private properties, and authorizing the Director of Human Services to execute necessary federal emergency shelter grant agreements. Bill number 325, introduced by Councilmember Burkett, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Columbia Capital Management LLC for financial advisory services. Bill number 326, introduced by Councilmember Burkett, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Donna Lindhors, Ph.D., for evaluation of the 15th year of the Choices Substance Abuse Recovery Program at the Buzz Westfall Justice Center. Bill number 327, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the Director of Revenue as trustee to grant a permanent easement and temporary construction easement to Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District on, over, and under a portion of land acquired at the August 1994 tax sale for construction of a sanitary project in connection with the Project Clear program. Bill number 328, introduced, excuse me, by Councilmember Stanger, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with St. Louis County Library District and McBride Bar LLC in connection with improvement of a portion of Music Avenue and development in the vicinity of Music Avenue and Bravo Road. Bill number 329, introduced by Councilmember Stanger, an ordinance amending ordinance number 17,480 is amended by repealing and reenacting Section 2 pertaining to PC 137-94, Fisher and Britzel Incorporated, Ringer Oaks. Bill number 330, introduced by Councilmember Burkett, an ordinance amending the Sandless County zoning ordinance and district maps by changing the boundaries of the C2 Shopping District and the R8 Residence District as provided herein, PC 38-13, Community Housing Management Corporation. Bill number 331, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance approving the application and preliminary plans as amended for the amended development in the CA Plan Commercial District of attractive land subject to conditions, and repealing ordinance number 19,964 as amended, PC 39-13, Crosby Realty LLC. Bill number 332, introduced by Councilmember Burkett, an ordinance amending Chapter 602, Title VI, Sandless County Revised Ordinance 1974 as amended, Public Health, by repealing and reenacting Section 602.050 pertaining to public nuisances. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection of bills.
Bill number eight, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Hold, please.
So ordered.
Bill number 234, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Bill number 314, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
At this time, I move to perfect Bill number 314.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 314 is perfected.
Bill number 315, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
I move to perfect Bill number 315.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 315 is perfected.
Bill number 316, introduced by Councilmember Quinn.
I'd like to take it up, move for perfection, Bill number 316.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 316 is perfected.
Bill number 317, introduced by Councilmember Quinn.
I'd like to take it up, move for perfection, Bill number 317.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 317 is perfected.
Bill number 318, introduced by Councilmember Quinn.
I'd like to take it up, move for perfection, Bill number 318.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 318 is perfected.
Bill number 319, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
I move to perfect Bill number 319.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 319 is perfected.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
I move to perfect Bill number 320.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 320 is perfected.
Bill number 321, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move to perfect Bill number 321.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 321 is perfected.
Bill number 322, introduced by Councilmember Stanger.
I move for perfection of Bill number 322.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 322 is perfected.
Bill number 323, introduced by Councilmember Stanger.
I move for perfection of Bill number 323.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 323 is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Bill number 181, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
Hold.
Are we allowed to pass, final pass today?
We, there, the bills that we can are here.
Mechanical code, yes, it's been pending for two weeks.
Oh, okay. Hold, please.
So ordered.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 238, introduced by Councilmembers Dolan, Stanger, and Erby.
Please hold.
So ordered.
And now Bills number 307, 308, 309, 310, 311, 312, and 313 were introduced on December 10th, 2013, and cannot be finally passed without a motion to suspend the rules to consider them. And of course, we do not have a full, all seven members present, so we cannot vote to suspend the rules. So those will be held until the next meeting, and that will be the order.
Madam Chair, moving on to resolutions, we have one this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for adoption of resolution number one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett?
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn. Madam Chair, on resolution number one, we have five ayes and two absents.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, item number one, second district.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two, second district.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Hold on the order of business and the same motion for item number four, and that will be the order.
Item number five, fourth district.
Receive file in the county council, be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number six, fourth district.
Hold, please.
So ordered.
As we got a new business, Madam Chair, we have three prepared orders this evening.
I move for adoption of orders number one, two, and three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Orders one, two, and three are adopted.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Happy New Year to everyone.